It's here every time.
So we'll open up the agenda. Anything you want to add, anyone to the agenda? You're good?
Yep, it's good to meet.
So we'll turn it over to you, Chip, if you want to open the public hearing.
Yes, thank you. The purpose of this meeting is we received some grant funding for our long-term control plan for the combined sewer overflow. Under state rules and EPA rules, we need to do more to prevent overflow events at the Lower Weldon Street point where the combined sanitary and storm sewer will overflow during high precipitation events when there's a lot in the catch basins that comes out. So the long-term control plan is an important step in that process. Under the grant funding, we have to hold a public hearing. Council doesn't necessarily need to take action tonight, but certainly interested in your questions and comments. Our consultant at Aldridge and Elliott, Wayne Elliott, will pretty much take it from here, hold a presentation, he'll be able to explain them off a lot more to us about where we are in the sequence of things in the context.
I'm going to stay because I've got Pat Finn here with me. Pat's our GS guy, numbers guy, he does all the stuff that I really have no clue how to do here, so a lot of the data analysis stuff here. So as Chip said, this is kind of dual purpose. So the funding here is provided from the state through the facilities engineering division. Lynette Clodden was planning to be here tonight, but she was sick, so she didn't able to make it. The primary purpose of this document is it's going to be submitted to the state, to the wastewater division, and so requirement of your 1272 order. So what I thought I'd do here is give you a little bit of background.
Can you guys do the slides, please?
Again?
That sign, that sign's up now, Chip.
It's interesting.
Try that?
It is, yeah, it is.
Yep.
You can see the overflow sign at the southern end of Poten Park on Lower Weldon Street.
So this is generally the way the report is laid out, so I thought it was important to give you a little bit of background. I want to CSO with some of the definitions and some of the existing definitions. You know, this isn't a new issue, it goes back, you know, to the 1970s for the city, so it's been around a long time. It's not unique to St. Albans, it's pretty typical for, you know, A, the larger Vermont communities in its way the systems were built back in the early 1900s. So I thought I'd start here, there's your sign right there, Tim. I'll read this to you, but so this is a definition of a combined sewer overflow, this is out of the Vermont CSO rule. So it's a discharge of waters of the state from a combined sewer system outfall that results from a wet weather storm event. That's a really important distinction because if you have an overflow during a dry weather, that does create another issue which you don't have. And that gives subject defiance and some other type of compliance issues. Such discharges include glass sewage and storm water, mostly storm water, that may contain untreated human waste and pollutants from residential, commercial, industrial establishments, as well as solids, metals, bacteria, viruses, and other pollutants. Generally, it's, you know, what's washed off from the streets and the parking lots and building roofs from the impervious areas, the developed areas. So we started generally been working off the 1990 CSO rule, and the state updated that in 2016. The good news, bad news about that is it's now more stringent than what's back in 1990. So there's communities that were in compliance with those 1990 rules that aren't in compliance any longer. And the big distinction there had to do with the storm event. So up until this point, if you did have an overflow for up to this particular specific storm event, you're okay. Now they've got the storm event precipitation event defined, but they also states you have to comply with the Vermont Water Quality Standards, and that's pretty difficult to do unless you totally eliminate the overflow or you do some type of treatment. So this new rule of purpose is to protect public health and the environment by ensuring that all remaining CSOs are brought into compliance with the requirements of state federal laws, including the Vermont Water Quality Standards. The primary goal of state federal pollution control programs is to abate control CSOs. It doesn't say eliminate, so that's an important distinction. And again, bring them into compliance with the Water Quality Standards. This last sentence is really important because this really is kind of the framework of how this long-term control plan, again, the city's been at this for a period of time. They recognize that CSO abating and control is iterative and costly process, and it will take time to bring the CSOs into compliance with the Vermont Water Quality Standards. So the communities are allowed quite a bit of time here, and that's really what the compliance schedule is going to be based on. So recently here, the state, when you got your new discharge permit, reissued this 1272 order, and there's been multiple revisions of this. I was going back, and some of the history is kind of interesting. One in the earlier 1272 orders, and again, that's a state legal order that's issued by the state because they have primacy. You had one that went out in the early 1990s, and back at that point, you had seven CSO locations. Six of those were corrected, and they were sealed up, so six of those fell off the list. So the good news, you only have one remaining. So this was issued October 1st, 2017, and with a new discharge permit. It's for the lower Weldon CSO, you have only one CSO location. This required this long-term control plan to be prepared and submitted within 18 months, so this is due the end of March, and that's primarily why we're here tonight.
Can I get a quick question?
Sure, absolutely. Just jump in.
Has this one, has this one here on Lower Weldon always been there?
Yes.
Okay, because it seems like maybe it was just upgraded a few years ago.
Wayne might be able to talk about how the equipment that monitors, it had been upgraded recently.
Yeah, so, yeah, it was around, so there was, and I will talk about the monitor equipment, but prior to 2012, what would happen to that manhole that's in the intersection?
Yeah.
Is the sewer would run out to the top of the manhole cover and pick up the cover, and it would run along the edge of the road down to the side, so that's what happened. Up until that point, now that all happens, kind of below ground, that's how we monitored the flow and the volumes and all that stuff. So it's pipe, but it still ends up ultimately Stevens Brook.
As I say, the manhole cover has not been off for a while.
Not that I'm aware of, no. Maybe it had some kind of crazy extreme of bad tip-off, but I'm not aware that that's happened. I've actually seen that before, you know, in prior years.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, feel free to jump in if you guys have questions or comments, this is pretty informal. One of the important things that's part of this 1272 order is this list of minimum controls, and one of these is the monitoring to characterize the CSO impacts and how effective the CSO controls are to require municipalities to evaluate the response. And this is the new storm event that's in the new rules, is this 24-hour, two and a half, six, two and a half point six inches of rainfall over that 24-hour period. The other important part of that is they also have an hourly intensity, which is 1.2 inches. In the city of St. Albans' case, that didn't change a whole lot from the previous policy. Other parts of the state, that 24-hour rainfall went up quite a bit more than that. So that's really what we're kind of gauging as far as what's happening at that CSO location. It's very important to monitor that because we can't really assess the improvements as we go forward if we don't know how long the overflows occur, what the volumes are, and what the peak flows are.
Wayne, are our totals not uniform with other parts of the state because of the existing infrastructure?
No, it has to do with just the precipitation events vary around the state, Tim, so in some other part of the state, that 24-hour may be close to three inches.
Right, so, but why the differential?
Between the 2.6 and the 1.2?
No, our 2.6 and someone else's 3 inches.
Oh, it's just that because of rainfall events, that rain, that specific rainfall event varies around the state depending where you are. It's just based on the historical data for that specific location.
So they're trying to key it to a typical extreme rain event?
For this one.
In our area, in other areas, during extreme rain events, they get more or less. So it's really zeroing in on our microclimate versus other parts of the state.
Interesting.
Yeah, so that number varies if you live in different parts of the state, it may be a little bit less, maybe a little bit more, so that's all based on, you know, historical rainfall data that's been collected over the years. To touch a little bit on the minimum controls, the monitoring is one of those, which the city's been doing since 2012. There's other things that are required that are part of that, too. Regular maintenance, obviously, the sewer lines, you know, the flushing and the TD-ing, which the city continues to do. The other part of that is you want to maximize the use of your collection system and the pipes by that. You want to use that available storage to the extent possible to limit the occurrence and volumes of those overflows. You also want to maximize the flow that goes to the wastewater plant, which the city does currently. And the other part of this, which doesn't happen here, is you want to prohibit any overflows occurring during the dry weather periods. And the other thing, just to mention, that one of the other requirements of this order was an annual report that has to go into the state, and that was submitted back in December 2015. And what the state just wants to do is kind of a check-in to see where you're at with what you've kind of agreed to do, and you know, how the overflow's important in that prior 12-month periods, and that was submitted previously.
If we had an event here, we have to, we have to let the state know within 24 hours?
Yeah, quicker than that, actually, yeah.
Quicker than that?
Yeah, and there's two degrees of notification, one of them you have to let them know it occurred, and then there's additional information that's required as a follow-up. I'll actually jump ahead a little bit. So at this overflow location, what the city did back in 2012 is put a manhole structure in, so there's a flow meter and what we call a rectangular weir. So instantaneously, any flow that's going through that pipe into that manhole is, we're measuring that immediately, so we know exactly when it starts and stops, so we know the duration. We also are measuring the total volume of flow that's coming over that weir, and then we also know the peak flow, and that's very important data to have, so the city has been doing that for a period of time. And that's, that information is uploaded to the mission unit, so we can all access that. It's all web-based, so we can access it as well as the city staff, so that information is available pretty quickly, so. A little background, so this map to the right is interesting, a lot of different colors, but basically, there was a lot of work done in the city back in the 70s and 80s, and that's really what led to the ability for the city to block off or eliminate six of those seven overflow locations at the time. What they did then was they kind of, what I call a low-hanging fruit, I'm sure it was a lot of money, but they got those areas separated, it was easy to do, where they could get it somewhere where the grades worked, so there's a lot, lot done. The city started back in 2008, didn't have any mapping in the sewer and stormwater systems, so there was a lot of work done there over the next two to three years. That was a big step in, you know, trying to be able to further evaluate some of these areas. And then through the regional planning, the drainage areas were delineated in this map to the right here. So anything that's in red is connected to the combined sewer system. Anything that's in blue is connected to the separated storm system, and anything in green just automatically goes overland to an existing stream. So there's quite a few areas of red that you can see, you know, and what we'll talk about is what we're, fortunately, the lasers don't work on these TVs, but what we're really trying to do is focus on the red, it's really the downtown area right here, because a lot of that's impervious, and it goes to the interceptor and the collection systems pretty quickly.
Can you go back to that one, Tim?
Yeah, sure.
So what's the, what's the big red font in the upper right?
Those are all areas within the city that are connected to the combined sewer system, Tim.
But what part of the city, what, what part of the city is that?
Looks like Congress.
North Congress.
Yeah, up on the area.
So we have some...
I'm trying to read the street names on there.
Yeah, this is Congress.
Yeah, so this is Main Street, right about, Main Street right here, and these are the railroad tracks here, Tim, so this is Lake Street.
This is on Messenger right here, I believe.
Yep.
And even though that's a lot of trees and lawns, it still contributes, but as Wayne said, we're really going after the impervious core of downtown first.
Right here, right here, you know, between Main Street and Lake Street.
Is that other junk there, is that Upper Weldon, that red patch there?
Yeah, come on, this one here. Yeah, Lower Weldon is also made of green here. So this is the area, kind of a summary of the major areas that are combined, and you can see there's quite a, pretty significant areas, and this isn't quite everything, it's a majority of it, but there's about 145 acres that are still connected to the combined system. So, you know, you've got some on Main Street, Federal Street is a biggie, Lower Weldon, obviously, quite a portion of Lake Street, St. Albans Cedar, Pearl Street, and Lake Street, and then you've got Messenger, Congress, High Prospect, which is one of the areas we're just talking about, Messenger, Barley Fire, and then you get Upper Weldon, so some pretty sizable drainage areas. One of the things to kind of be clear with this is that we've got these all laid out, and obviously, the solution isn't necessarily to separate all of these issues, and I don't think the intent is to do that, so we'll have quite a bit more discussion about that as we move forward. So this is not the solution, is to ultimately separate every single area that we have here. First of all, you couldn't afford to, and it creates some other issues with doing that, for example, effects on the stormwater side of things, the flow restoration plan, so.
What Wayne's saying is, you know, we also have to treat our stormwater before it gets to the brooks, and we have the flow restoration plan we showed everyone with a list of projects to accomplish there. Well, every time we separate stormwater from a combined sewer system, that's new stormwater that was going to the plant that will now go directly to the brooks. So it's new, it's more stormwater that we have to treat somehow. So that's sort of this balance, this catch 22 we're caught in.
Yeah, so it's kind of this, it's this regulatory conflict, because they want you to be at the CSOs, and as part of your flow restoration plan, you have high-flow targets that you need to have for Stevens and Rug. So by separating these areas, we're putting more stormwater directly into the streams, which negatively, in fact, your targets that you need to reduce those flows and those two receiving, those two tributaries receiving water, so.
Does that go against everything they're trying to do with the TMDM one?
Yep, it does.
Yeah.
Well, that's why your typical combined sewer separation project today will probably have some sort of stormwater treatment attached to it for the new stormwater that you're separating out.
So when we say it's going directly to the brook, I mean, there's, there's going to be some intention somewhere.
We're probably going to try, we're going to try to keep it from going directly to the brook during a storm. We're going to see what the possibilities are.
So that's why, if you look at that list in an ideal world, even if we could separate those, we almost really want to, because that's not necessarily a good thing, and Burlington and Rockland and other communities in Montpelier kind of in the same boat. The reality is moving forward, you always have some part of your system that's going to remain behind.
So like a way to treat stormwater that's going in the brook, would that be like a settling pond or something like that?
Could be.
Yeah, or a gravel wetland, an artificial wetland that we create where it goes first, yeah.
There were, maybe there's something, there were some little discussions about utilizing that GMB pond area.
Yeah, the old corrie storm. Yeah, I got that question over here.
We actually have looked at that as part of this, and we'll jump into that later, but I think it probably works better for the stormwater treatment side, because putting wastewater even temporarily into like an open pond like that creates a lot of aesthetic issues and orders and things like that, so it's probably not that desirable. Location is okay, could work, but for those reasons, probably not a great option. So again, the good news, you know, the city has one overflow location at Lower Weldon that manholes at the intersection of Lower Weldon and South Elm Street. There is a hard pipe that comes kind of in the northeast corner over towards the tennis courts, and that's where the flow meter structure is, and then from there, it's hard pipe that ultimately ends up down in the, down in the Stevens Brook. So a little bit about rainfall, it's kind of interesting. So the city, you know, is also is part not just measuring the overflow, but also is required to measure the rainfall. We usually try to get this as close to the site as possible, because even in communities of different sides, you can get various degrees of rainfall events that occur, you know, for specific precipitation or dates. One of the things I found kind of interesting, if you look at the total rainfall at the very bottom from 2016 to 2018, doesn't, doesn't change a whole lot. It varies quite a bit by month about when it happens, but it's more important how the events happen and what time of year is really more critical than how much rainfall you're getting over the entire year. And as we've all talked about, it's not just the rainfall we're measuring for each year of the overflow, you know, we're measuring the length, total volume of peak flow that's coming through that pipe in the Stevens Brook. What we're trying to do here is just get a snapshot of how many of the rainfall events, you know, that we have, or five inches, and we're trying to gauge on really when that trigger happens that occurs or causes an overflow, and as we get into this a little bit, this is the time of year when they occur. What we find is they very seldom occur from July through the end of the year, which is good news, because it's saying that the city's collection system really has out of a capacity to handle that. A lot of the, the majority of the overflow events you see occur this time of year when the ground's frozen. So one of the things we are allowed to do when we're assessing, you know, what triggers the overflow, is we use the equivalency. So we'll not just take the rainfall, but also the water equivalency, the snow melt factor that into the 24-hour, because that all adds, and it's really what contributes to causing the overflow events. This is a lot of information here, so this is the overflow event summary going back to 2002, when you, 12, when you installed the flow meter. And as you can see, if you go through this, as I mentioned previously, they typically occur in the first six months of the year, primarily when the ground's frozen and when the water table is up in the spring. So very hard to deal with, like if we have rain next week, you know, if we get an inch of rain, we just had nine inches of snow, you get an inch of rain, and you lose, you know, 12 or 18 inches of snow pretty quickly, you know, that's really what really triggers these overflow events. And if you look at this chart, basically, the green is the volume of the overflow events. If you're taking this left axis across here, so you can see you've had some that were around those two, two million gallons. This one was a little bit, you had a couple in January to March of 2017, they were up over two million gallons. And then to the, in the top, this is actually the equivalent precipitation that occurs. So for example, you had a little bit over three inches here, and for the overflow volume, you know, you had a little bit over a million gallons, you know, in that December, so that's generally when the overflows are occurring. This is the overflow event, just basically the number of events, it's 2012, you know, and you get anywhere from two to 10. 2017 appears to be a little bit of an outlier, we don't really have an explanation, you had a couple really significant events occur there, and we don't know if it was an accuracy in the flow metering, but the weather and what we measured for the rainfall and the snow equivalency didn't seem to be a whole lot different than what we'd seen previously. We do know in 2017, we had a really, really wet spring and summer. You remember from May, it felt like it rained every day, so, you know, that's probably part of it, but so 2017 happened to be worse than the prior years. And then what we're doing in the bottom of this table here is what we're trying to do, see, basically have three events that have kind of occurred, which are kind of close to that precipitation threshold that we're looking for. So on February of 2016, you had a total of about 3.3 inches of rainfall snow melt combined, about 1.4 million gallons. And then on August 2016, you had about 2.3 total inches, which you had a very high intensity, so it's not just what's happening over that 24-hour period, it's also how hard the rain is coming down for that short period of time. And then in December 2018, you know, you had an overflow of about 830 gallons, you had 3.2 inches and kind of a lighter intensity, so those are kind of the larger similar storm events that have occurred over this period of time.
Wayne, have we ever looked into where we stand compared to other communities per thousand people or something?
Can't, it's apples and oranges. We do a whole bunch of these, and I can talk with you, spend the next 30 minutes talking about six different communities, and the issues are all completely different, you know, and how they happen. I'll just give you a really quick example, like Kingsburg Falls was probably one of the success stories, like I started with those guys in early 1990s. Every time it rained, you haven't had an overflow. They had three of them, and we got it down to one, and what we did is we put some offline storage in, put more flow through the treatment plant, they haven't had an overflow occur in the last, you know, four, five years. So the solutions are different for each community. Some have, Montpelier has a ton of builders tied in, building was very, very tough to deal with, but combined systems are still very common in the bigger communities, and again, it's the infrastructure that goes back, but the issues that Rockland's having and Burlington are having are very different to what you guys are having. It's not uncommon for, like Hartford has still five or six overflow locations, you know, Newport City has three or four. They're not plugged off, they're not necessarily active, but they're there, and the state will take them off the list, you know, even though you haven't had a recorded overflow for four or five years, so everyone is very, very different in how they respond and, you know, what the causes and what the situations are, so. Just a little more background, same map again, so your existing stormwater infrastructure, you've got about 160 catch basin and drainage structures connected to the combined sewer. And then if you go down to the bottom table, percentage drainage area, so if you're looking at this map, you know, what we see in the red, you know, about 10.5% of that area that, you know, is going to the combined sewer system, so that's kind of the primary area that we're really focusing on here. The city has done a lot here in the last few years, and, you know, I just kind of wanted to quantify the number to the right, the 1.5 million, so you have done several projects, and you spent a lot more money on that, but in some of these projects, it was set through street skate, you know, water line replacement, sewer, roadway reconstruction. But what we tried to do is take these three or four things, and estimated to spend at least about a million and a half dollars on just the CSO-related improvements here in the last five years. The city has been proactive. The control improvements is adding the monitoring in Lower Weldon Street back in 2012, when you hit the Main Street, Street, Street Skate Project. There's a lot of those buildings in that area that are still connected to the combined sewer. Actually, I missed a slide here.
Wayne, how many, I think you mentioned it, but how many catch basins are there in the system?
Total, Tim, or just the ones connected to the combined sewer?
Total, could be cleaning them all up.
So if you total those two numbers at the top, that includes drainage structures, so it's not going to be exactly right, but you're, you know, you're well over 1,050, probably 1,100 roughly, that does include some drainage structures. So the CSO rule, just to kind of reiterate what the need for the project is, you've really kind of gone through phase one already, you've done the minimum controls, that's something the city's been doing for quite a period of time, and again, you're trying to comply with the water quality-based requirements. You're really in the phase two currently, so you're continuing to implement the minimum controls that we talked about with the maintenance, maximizing the flow to the treatment plant, you know, the monitoring of the CSO. The second part of this, again, we're here tonight for this long-term control plan, this needs to be submitted to the state, this is where they'll put a compliance schedule, and that's something that's going to be updated as we continue to move forward. So I'll jump, actually, I missed a calls. Actually, let me go back to this slide here a little quickly. I actually wanted to talk about this a little bit more. So back to the Main Street, Street Skate Project, when that was done, you know, we went through the basements of all those buildings, primarily on the west and a few on the east side. There's still, you know, at least over 20 of those buildings, the roofs are connected to the combined system. Those are very challenging, you go in the basement, it's not as simple as just heading the sewer out one side and picking up the roof drain. A lot of those old buildings, you know, when they were built, the roof drain was the common bed line, so it's very, very difficult to separate those. But one of the things the city chose to do as part of that, in a couple areas, up to Kingdon and then up in this area... Kingman and then up in this area, is we put a new separate storm system in there and we brought a pipe through the basement, into the basement of those buildings. So if somebody buys a building and they do a complete renovation or they want to, so you've got the ability internally if they choose to, to connect to that and take that roof out to the storm. So that was prudent to do because obviously if you have a building owner or several of those that want to do that, you don't want them digging up the sidewalk and the work that she's just did, you know, four or five years ago. So that's in place. The thing we have to be a little careful about is that, you know, we estimate if you did all those roofs out, it would take about 40,000 gallons out for that design storm. But the reason it yellow is none of those roofs have been taken off yet. So that capability is there, but it hasn't been done yet. Same thing on Lake Street when they did the construction there. A separate storm system was put in, so that's there. And again, it was prudent to do that and good planning. But unfortunately, as we went west back in an intersection, we had to tie that back into the combined system because we couldn't take it any farther than that. You couldn't go up Federal Street and it was going to be too costly. It wasn't really part of the project to go into the railroad tracks. So again, that was a good thing to do and that itself could take another 160,000 gallons, but that does go back into the combined system. So we're showing those in yellow right now. So that works pretty good, but it hasn't really taken flow out of the system yet. Fairfield Street was a biggie. That took a little bit over 50 acres out of the combined system. So, you know, we're estimating 600,000 to 700,000 gallons on that. So that's had a significant beneficial impact when we separated that part of the system up there. So alternatives considered for the current projects, you know, the city's got a lot of things that are going on currently that are going to kind of help to address the problem. The Federal Street CSL separation is a big one here. Back in the early seventies, there was a lot of work done there and a separate sanitary and separate stormwater system is constructed on Federal Street from Lake up, you know, past Kingman. The problem with that is that everything in the street is separated and as you go west out towards the railroad tracks, ultimately it goes back into the combined system again. So that's a big, that's, that's one we're still working on and taking a hard look at. Unfortunately, I'll show you here a couple slides, but Phil's trying to figure out where that goes. But that could potentially remove, you know, eight to 900,000 gallons. That can have a big significant impact on that. Kingman Street is in the works and that's in yellow right now. And the plan is to put new storm drainage on that street, go through the building basements again. Removing that area is included in the Federal Street because that storm would be connected to Federal Street. Ultimately, what we want to do is get that separated so we can take that out. So overall cost for that, which isn't just the stormwater, it's, you know, 900 and some odd, $60,000. The other one that's, that's ready to go too is Stevens Street, the utility upgrades. That design is, is 100%. That would take, you know, about 65,000 gallons out. That includes new water line, new storm system. We show the Main Street roof drain separation again. The second phase of that would actually be going into the buildings and taking those off, but that could take about 60,000. And the other one that's out there that's, the city evaluated back in 2012 was 100th Stormwater Project. You know, that's got some future potential and it's probably not in the short term or long term. There's some more discussion that needs to be had with the landowner. That primary purpose of that project was for stormwater management, treatment, reduction of flows. But as part of that, there was a potential to take some of these combined areas into that stormwater pond. So nothing's been done on that since 2012, but that could have some potential moving forward. A little bit about the Federal Street separation. So to kind of explain, we still don't have some answers on this one yet. We have the separated storm out in the street here. There's been a bunch of smoke and dye testing and we know it goes under the tracks back in the Wesley direction and we can't confirm where it goes to. The next step is that we're going to be working with the city to do some flushing and television inspection because we'd like to be able to figure where that goes to. Ultimately, you get out to the west here, you have the line that goes down to the sewer plant, there's the old interceptor line, which is storm. Ideally, if we could confirm it goes in that direction here, we would like to build the blue, the blue line that's shown here and just extend that line over to the separated storm and get that out of the combined system. If we can't confirm that, we may have to do the red line to get this all the way over here and that's under the tracks and that's going to be pretty costly, you know, when we're aware of. The one thing that this future phase has the benefit of doing, as Chip said, we could do some future stormwater attenuation and treatment on this undeveloped property here too. So a lot of moving kind of pieces and targets. Unfortunately, we don't know where that one goes, but that can definitely have a significant benefit on the CSL controls moving forward.
Just for some context, when, when the city did its, its big round of separation in the, in the past that Wayne's talking about, we took the old sewer interceptor to the plant and we repurposed it, right? We built a new sewer, we built a new sanitary sewer interceptor next to the old one. And then we took a lot of our newly separated stormwater lines and ran them through the old sewer interceptor. And it actually comes out at Stevens Brook near the wastewater treatment plant. So when Wayne's talking about the separated interceptor, it's our sewer, our combined sanitary and our separated stormwater interceptors both go next to each other all the way out to the plant. We have a lot of other stormwater outfalls to the brooks throughout the city, but that's a big one. And the reason why doing a project on Federal Street that's between the plant and the overflow point at Lower Weldon, the reason why that would make a difference is that all these little points, like all this stuff on Federal Street, it charges that, that sewer, our new sewer interceptor to the point where it starts to back up. Like Federal Street and the downtown core are all hitting it at the same time, charging it and start, it is full, the pipe is full and the plant's handling it down at the wastewater treatment plant. So we're not overflowing the plant. We're overflowing the pipe that goes to the plant. And eventually it comes out at the lowest point, which is at Lower Weldon Street. So, so these big projects that you're, it doesn't quite make sense. We wouldn't want to, you know, we want to get rid of all the sewer, all the stormwater that's coming down to Lower Weldon because that's where it's overflowing. It's actually overflowing backwards. It's overflowing backwards from the downtown core and Federal Street up to the Lower Weldon Street.
It's filling that pipe, which is a good thing on the minimum control side, but the pipe isn't big enough to take all that flow. So it's kind of a path of least resistance. That's a good point. So when we're looking at where these projects come in, it's important in context of where they come in, in that intercenter line. You could do something, a location maybe would help to bait the overflow. But this one makes sense because if we can get this flow out of that pipe, you know, that's really going to free up a lot of capacity and really help to control the CSL that's going on quite a ways upstream of that. Just a drawing, you know, this, said this is pretty well completed. This is the red line, the new storm line for Stevens. And again, this takes out another kind of combined area, not a big project, but have some beneficial improvement. And this is just a visual of the Hungerford project. You know, this is the conceptual design that was proposed and a couple of the areas they talked about is we could maybe take the combined area, kind of it's in the northeast corner of Main Street border of the city and the town. And then also there's an area in the year and using that old interceptor line and bring it all here to use that for attenuation and treatment. So that's, that concept is, is out there. Alternatives considered for future projects. So one of the requirements of this long control plan is, is a lot of focus on green stormwater infrastructure. So Watershed has been helping us with that. They've identified about, you know, almost 30 different locations where we can do that. And generally what you're trying to do with the GSI stuff, you're trying to put the stormwater back in the ground, trying to infiltrate that in the ground. Because if we do that, then that's not making it to the catch basins and the pipes and overloading existing infrastructure. So you look at a curb bump and the city's done quite a bit of this already on Main Street, some of the other areas, you know, stormwater planners, bio retention, bio swales. The thing to caution you on this is this is a good thing to do, but this is not going to go very far to significantly reduce the CSOs that occur. And the reason for that is that we know they're occurring this time of year primarily when the ground's frozen or the water table is high. Well, these types of practices don't work very well in those kind of conditions. So these can be done in conjunction with some other things, but these in itself aren't going to go very far in really solving, solving the overall problem.
You touched briefly, Wayne, on, you mentioned the town, the north end of town.
Yep.
Is this a discussion that's happening with them?
No, not at this point. Fortunately, with the overflow stuff, you know, the city is the perfect Tim, so.
But we do, we do carry some of it into the town, right?
Yep. Ultimately, that cost is shared with these sewer rates and then you do these projects. So, you know, throughout the, throughout the service area. So these are just conceptually some other areas that are out there as we talked about. And to be clear again, we're not even thinking that you would separate. These are, these are ways out. You know, Lake Street, what we would like to do is continue that extension to take that area out. And then we get Lower Weldon, Congress, and these are the red areas that you can see up there on that. And these have some potential for separation as we go forward. However, there's other things that we want to do first to see if we can get there. Again, we don't want to just focus on just doing the separation of all these areas. That's not necessarily the most effective or cost effective way to go. We're talking about something that occurs pretty frequently. You know, this isn't something that's happened every week or every day. You know, in a given year, it may happen three times or eight, nine times. So that's really how we're trying to address these conditions. So one of the options is to do, actually two options. So if we pick the overflow location up here, the manhole up here and the pipe that comes down to Stevens, there's two things that we could do. We've actually had pretty good success with. There's one thing is what we do is called offline storage. And I've got, got a concept of that, but basically what we would be doing is if we have an overflow occur, what you would do is just pump that up into a holding tank. It could be above grade or it could be below ground. It's a big tank because we're talking about some pretty sizable volumes. And what we're really doing here now is really kind of conceptual level right now just to see how these approaches fit with the other stuff. The other thing you can do is treatment, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute, is you could take the overflow and treat it and still discharge it to Stevens Brook. That's hard to do again at this scale and it's pretty costly just, not just with the capital, but the operation cost. So this is a concept. If we do these other things initially and we can really get these volumes down to where they're manageable, this is just a very kind of conceptual rendering, but we would take the overflow as it happens now. We would have to screen it. We would have a pump station. We would put it, you could do an above ground tank, maybe like an aqua store or something like that with a cover. And all you're really doing is holding that wastewater in there, that overflow in there until you have flow back into the interceptor line that Chip mentioned. So when you free up capacity in here, you're just going to bleed that back through. So you're just holding it temporarily, it could be a day or two at the most, but not generally more than that. You would go back into the sewer line and then ultimately that's, the benefit of that is going to continue to have a treatment plan like it does now, so.
And it doesn't create any new stormwater.
Yep. So that's why something like this has some solid benefits. The, the issue right now is we're talking about something that's out five, seven, eight or 10 years and we really don't know what that volume needs to be. We're kind of estimating it right now with, you know, implementing some of the other improvements.
So I have a question with this plan here, this above ground, dim here. First off, that's, that's in the park.
I know it is, and I'm not sure that's the right place.
And that's baseball field as well, he was.
I know, yep.
And if the water, so you say the water's not coming from here. It's coming from here. So there's, I can think of locations closer to here that would, might suit it better and that would alleviate some of the water down there or is other water just going to end up down there?
Yeah, could we, could we, could we pull from anywhere on the interceptor for a storage tank?
You could, yep. And that's a great thought. You know, I, we've kind of been kind of hung up right now and I totally agree, maybe the park isn't the best place, but we're just trying to at least put a concept out there. You could do a below ground tank, but the obvious thing there, that gets very costly. You know, the water table's high, the soils aren't great, but totally agree, the park is kind of a, and maybe it's the other end of the park, there's some better spots in there. We're really trying to do, not trying to get you to make any decisions for national purposes to say offline storage is a concept that could help your situation here, so. But, but it could be down the interceptor line too, if we had a better spot down here that, you know, we could make work to.
Any estimate on what's, how big that tank is?
Right now, right now, we're estimating about 500,000. Because, you know, the overflow volumes are getting up over a million. And so if we do some of these other projects to get enough flow out of that, yeah, as you go on over the years, get the other projects done, you continue to watch things and be able to kind of narrow it to the size that you need a little bit closer, but at least a ballpark.
I think the tank on, the tank on the hill's 2 million?
I thought it was 1 million and we need to add another million at some point. Yeah, I, I think, I think this graphic, you know, and we, you know, we've been counseling Wayne to be really careful about how he talks about using Houghton Park. I don't think using any part of Houghton Park for wastewater treatment or a storage tank that's sitting there is, there are all kinds of problems associated with that. But there might be, there might be some out, out of the box ways of doing detention at Houghton Park without it looking like detention. Like maybe it goes under a reconstructed field or in a, a burn. Or maybe we raise the park, you know, and put it underneath. I mean, but it is one of the easiest places to do detention because it's right at the point of the overflow. So it would be easy to know when we need it, when it's, when it's reaching that overflow point right there at that manhole, it'd be easy to know, okay, send it to the tank. And if we do detention instead of just separation, then it means we're not creating any more new stormwater that we have to treat on the other end.
Because we're just waiting for the capacity of the treatment plant, the sewer to free up and then we're putting it back down, which is optimal.
Well, I'm just saying 200 feet away, obviously we don't own the property, but there's the two retention ponds. The two cooling ponds, I mean, if we don't use those for other types, that's, that might be an option as a place to put that tank.
You know, the other thing I hadn't thought about too was, you know, you could build a tank in one of those cooling ponds too possibly. You know, you could get it down low.
Just half above ground, half on the ground. So it'd be, you could, you, you could utilize gravity at least a little bit there.
In the bigger, you know, bigger communities, they do some creative stuff where these tanks blow grade, you know, bury. That's nice. The problem is soils aren't great, so it's very costly to do anything underground, but that is commonly done. The big communities, what they do, like Hartford, Great Oranges, what they do is they do these rock tops. They do these big 20 foot diameter, you know, 5,000 feet. That's how they're doing this. They basically conceptually.
Big trenches?
That's right. They just drop that flow down into these big rock tunnel and then they just pump it back up on the capacity. So the concept's the same.
But the water table is lower there?
No, they get down into the bedrock and they do these big pump machines. Yeah, that's what, you know, Hartford, you know, Great Oranges, the bigger communities are. Because they're in a safe hole, they can't afford to separate the system. So they have to do this offline storage and it's a similar concept here, but just holding it, you know, until you free that capacity back up. Yeah, I think it's funny if you're talking, you know, like.
I don't want to go down, I don't want to go down and do maintenance on that.
No.
I was just gonna, I had done a site visit to one in Syracuse where it was manmade wetlands where they just fill the goon after the goon and let it recharge groundwater.
So another option here, which this one to me doesn't fit, it's going to be either or, you could treat the overflow. That's got a whole lot of challenges because you need to obviously screening, you need to take, you know, all the organic stuff, the plastics and all that out of it. You need to do primary treatment and you have to disinfect it and you got to do chlorine, you got to have 30 minutes. And logistically, this whole thing is a pain again. This is something that you're spending a lot of money, capital costs, that's really just going to be ready to go and it's, it's notice. And it may work three times a year, five or 10 times, but this can be a concept or an approach if you have no other option again, you don't really want to separate. This is actually what Burlington does with their overflow and their plant. So flow comes in, you know, once it gets to a certain point, it goes offline and it goes through the scenario, it goes through the screening, it goes through primary treatment. Ultimately, it comes back around and disinfects and so you can do this in large scale. But for something like this, again, the park. for something like this, again, the park and just the frequency of that, just is not a very practical approach to go.
Now, that doesn't go back into the ground, that goes, that gets, it does?
No, no, it goes back into the pipe.
Okay.
I'm sorry, no, you're right, it would go back into the brook, yeah.
Okay. Because we have about a foot of topsoil there and then it's solid clay, so not a lot going back into the ground.
No, no, it would be treated, so it'd be suitable to go back into the brook, yeah.
Although it would still be a source of phosphorus.
Yep.
We would kill the E. coli and the bacteria, but it would be a phosphorus issue, you know.
So what you're trying to do is treat it so you can comply with a water quality standard so it's suitable for discharge back into the receiving water. So selected, so really what we're looking at, you know, over the next year to five years, if we got Stevens on there, you know, that's slated for construction in 2020, construction costs, that's not just the stormwater part of it, that includes water line, funding and source and that's to be determined. The Kingman Street is scheduled for 2020. Again, that number includes everything for Kingman, not just the storm. 2021, we're showing Federal Street. Once we figure that out, hopefully this spring and summer, we can get that first phase, get the alignment nailed down and put some budgets together. That's, that's got a huge impact, so that's a pretty significant project here. And then right now, we've shown the roof drain separation so that, you know, if something happens, somebody does a business or building that, you know, I'll take up the opportunity to disconnect, so that, that can be a voluntary thing at this point, but, you know, any of the roofs you get off are going to be helpful moving forward. So this is kind of generally what we're looking at over the next kind of zero to five years. The reason for this, you know, is again, back to that initial slide about giving you plenty of time here, you know, there's a lot of factors that come into this and the state's going to really give you some time to do this. The first one, you know, as you get these projects, then you want to monitor the overflows and document the control and the reduction of frequency because you want to do the project and say, well, now how, how do things look now? You know, what I, what do I have left to deal with? So that's why I say they don't want you to do five or six of these things. Let's do them in some kind of, you know, methodical order here and see how they help to bait the overflow. The other thing that we're all still trying to figure out too, which is, you know, which is a realistic concern is the effects of climate change. You know, things happen differently now than they did even four or five years ago. We're getting heavier rainfalls, you know, weird snow melt, you know, higher intensity. So that's a tough thing to factor in, but that definitely affects what's going on with the overflow location. The third part of this is the state, you know, is very sensitive to cost and as we move forward, you know, let's say I don't, I don't have any idea at this point that to separate everything, let's say that's $30,000, that's not affordable to the city. You know, so what's the objective? You know, what can you really do here? So as we go forward and do these projects, it's going to be important to track the cost and understand what the impact to the sewer customers is because there's a threshold there, you know, where we can get at this cost benefit analysis. This is really important with the last one here, is that no matter what we do here to the set of the money that the city can reasonably afford, you may not be able to totally eliminate the overflow. You could still maybe have one occur a year and a lot of these bigger communities still have an overflow occur, has to negotiate with the state. So ideally, everybody would, and I don't think anybody thinks they're a good thing, but, you know, as we go forward, it may not be reasonable to just say, you're never going to have an overflow occur here again and we need to, you know, have that discussion. So that's the reason for the phased approach, you know, accounting the effect of the cost and the city involves in the capital, you know, debt, retirement, whole end cost. Down the road, it may have to have that discussion, kind of a negotiation with the state about, you know, this is what we've got left, is this, is this acceptable, you know, so it doesn't meet the intent of the policy. And then the long-term projects we've got out here still, we've got Federal Street, we've shown a phase two, you know, that could be the storage and the attenuation pond. Lake Street again, we want to continue that across the railroad tracks, Lower Weldon Street possibly. And then, you know, we've got, it would either be one or the other, but under the storage treatment, we would do probably the offline storage, probably wouldn't do the treatment, so you wouldn't do both of those, it would be one or the other. You know, and the Hungerford project is still out there, you know, see where that goes over the next few years and what potential that has. Okay? A lot of information, so.
See, they were worried about this back then.
One thing to just take away.
There's one of those tubes.
Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts with this. You know, this is a living document going forward and as everybody gets new information, it's important to keep that updated and obviously for the city to show progress, to continue to show progress in kind of dealing with this issue, but, you know, we're all going to gain more information as we move forward, so that's kind of what this document is going to be. And the state's going to come back with a schedule to review this and, you know, there's some give and take on that kind of as we move forward, so.
Chip, is there any possibilities with utilizing the, I don't know if you own the property, but the property we're buying turns to Pearl. There's that big, it's probably three, my guess is two, three acres right there, it's just.
Yeah, and you're, yeah, on the other side of, so there's, there's the, there's the empty lot that the railroad owns that's just north of Food City and Track Side.
Just right across the street.
And then there's another wooded lot right across from that.
Yeah.
Who knows? I mean, I think we need to, you, we also have to be strategic about what kind of land we want to use. I mean, some of that land could be a nice housing development, right? But I think that the point you had about why, why try to use Oldham Park, there's another spot along the interceptor line that we're not using as a park, and I think we should look at those options, you know.
Yeah, because if we're thinking, hey, we might not want to use this because it's houses.
Right.
Should be, hey, don't we use this because it's a park.
Exactly.
And what we, what we can do is if you move that downstream, you know, we can gauge pretty well, you know, what we think's coming into that from some of these upstream areas to see if there's a better point or appropriate point downstream that would be, that would work just as well, kind of accomplish the same objective.
Chip, can we post this on the website somewhere? Do you think that would be appropriate?
We can.
Because I think every time we have an overflow event, people, you know, you hear from people, what is the city doing? What is the city doing? And there's a lot to it and I'd love to be able to point people to the work that's gone on, the work that's in the plans.
I think people need to realize that the combined sewer, the benefit of it is that system is treating all the stormwater. So all of that water, everything's going through our plant and all the issues about contaminants and sediments and phosphorus, the plant's taking care of all of that. It's just a problem like Wayne says, a few times a year, when something that is mostly stormwater overflows at the, at the overflow point.
Does our audience have any questions?
I do, actually. What about the, in that stream destabilization of removing of this storm sewer separation? Because as you're pulling that water out of, and you put it into Stevens Brook, Stevens Brook's already in here by the water.
Yeah, we talked about that before, yeah. So that's the reason why trying to separate everything isn't necessarily a ten dollar solution. You get some conflicting regulatory requirements there. You know, the city's got the flow restoration plan for, Steve is a rug that has high flow targets, we need to be a little careful as we hold that water out of the combined system and move it to the streams that we're not negatively impacting that targets. We need to be mindful of that, you know, as we look at these improvements and these solutions.
Anything else, Michelle?
No. Thank you.
Wayne, take your call if need be down the road.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't see it, I thought it was at 3:00.
Any other questions from the council? Chip, closing comments? Wayne, thank you for coming in, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for the detail. It's good to, to go through it.
I guess that's it.
Do we need a motion or anything?
So Wayne, you think the state wants us to accept anything at this point or just to have a vote here?
No, this is, I would just say this is for informational purposes.
All right.
You know, I think it's important, like Chad, I don't mind writing in some of the feedback a little bit to the location of the storage. You know, that not an ideal site, maybe some other options, at least we can note that and make sure everybody's kind of aware of that, so.
Just put in here, will not happen while Chad listens. Actually, Wayne, what I was going to offer is Chad's only one out of seven, so.
We can over, we can overrule him pretty quickly.
I'll have you all come down and pay me a visit and you'll never leave.
What about, what about this red spot near Ruby? I think we can put a tank there. There's an open lot that used to have a house.
I got, I got a rain guard there. But I do want to be clear that we're not necessarily, it's just the concept and that could go into different locations and that still needs more work. We're not supporting or advocating a necessarily go where, showing that, but it's a concept.
A good conversation starter.
There's some vacant houses in the area, there's some derelict properties, you know, within, you know, a couple hundred yards, so.
Going back to that.
Yeah, that might be a good location, but if you're going to use it for something else, you know, too, but, you know.
Good. Entertaining motion, Joyner.
So.
Scott.
Oh, David.
Hi.
Good. Thank you all, thank you. Wayne again.